Especially following Brown versus Board of Ed. School boards passed a lot of policies. They were in the policymaking driver's seat. They passed policies that continued de facto segregation and really set our schools up for the inequalities that we see today. And so for school boards to now leave that policymaking role to the superintendent and their cabinet really is a disservice to the role and to kids. And so one of the big differences is that we're just really empowering them to step into that policymaking role to dismantle the status quo systems that aren't working for so many kids.
Hello, friends and welcome. You know, last week, we saw a large number of people that won school board elections, to be specific, more than 30,000 people are going to be coming to school boards in January, new school board members, some of them were incumbents, but many new school board members. And the best hope that we could have for our schools running well and doing their best for kids is that competent governance minded people come to the school boards, knowing that their role is not to bring politics and to inject kind of culture war into their district, but actually to bring a calming competent presence on school boards. Because we know that those are the things that will matter most for how schools operate and how districts operate. We wanted to reach out to someone who actually could give us a little bit more information and make for a good conversation. We like to tap in to people that are experts. We were able to get Carrie Douglas from School Board Partners to join us to have this conversation, to talk about a little bit about the aftermath of the elections that just passed by last week. This is a great time to do it because Carrie's organization has put forth a toolkit and an empowered governance framework that is meant to help board members, new and old board members, learn what they need to learn to be the best at their job that they could possibly be and to be good stewards of the public trust in their role as school board members. So Carrie, welcome. Thank you for making the time for us today.
Thanks for having me.
You know, it's a good time to talk to you because right now, we have seen across the country, there have been many people elected to school boards. The election was just held a couple of days ago, and tens of thousands of new school board members are going to be taking their seats in January. And this turned out a little bit differently than we may have worried about that there were going to be a lot of counterproductive school board members, because there is a national movement afoot to send very specifically politically minded people to school boards, who may not be looking in the best interest of how they govern, but they might be bringing some chaos to school boards. And it looks like that's not going to be as much of the problem that we're dealing with. But I would love to start with you just in what do you think is your take in terms of what you see all those people coming in January? What is your biggest concern? What concerns have been kind of mollified for you? How are you seeing this tens of thousands of new school board members coming to boards next year?
Yeah, thank you, Chris. A couple of things. One, we are thrilled that out of the school board members that we work most closely with, almost 80% of them were reelected on November 7. So I think that speaks to when you have school board members that are well trained and representative of their communities. Communities understand that and want to keep them in their seats. And I think across the rest of the country, you know, what we're hearing is that communities rejected a lot of the school board races that were based on national politics, which is what we want to see. I mean, school boards are, you know, the most local form of democracy that we have, and we want to see communities really empowered to elect folks that represent them. And so when you've got big money and PACs and, you know, national consultants coming in and running campaigns for folks and they're not winning, I think that really speaks to our democracy still working reasonably well at the local level.
You know, normally, school board races are seen as down ballot races. They're not seen as the the big ticket. Do you think that it is a good thing that there was so much more energy placed on school boards this year, even if some of that energy was not necessarily positive, but, you know, for a negative reason, but more people paid attention this time around? Do you feel good about that?
Yeah, we do feel good about it. I mean, school boards and school board members have the most direct impact on families of any elected position in many ways, and yet often folks don't pay attention to them. So the increased attention is good, as long as we can help communities understand what they should actually be looking for and not be, you know, carried away by the partisan politics. But again, it seems like that didn't happen. So increased awareness is great. And a lot of what we try to help board members do is really talk to their constituents about the actual role of a school board member, so that the communities know what to pay attention to and what not to pay attention to.
And I don't think that a lot of people know what school boards actually do. I'm a former school board member, you're a current school board member. I think there's a lot of mystery around what the role is. For those who it is a mystery for, what is the role of a school board?
Yes, I probably shouldn't admit this, but I am clear that my first day on the dais, I actually had no idea what my role was, even after going through the campaign. But that's okay. We, you know, we can admit, because that's the first step towards being better. So for folks that are intimately involved in school boards, we think that they do really six key things and should do almost nothing else. The first of which is they hire, manage, and evaluate and support their superintendent, which is one of the highest leverage things they can do. They set the goals and vision for the district based on the goals and values and vision of the community. They approve the budget. And because your budget is your strategy, that is a really important one. They are policymakers, so they pass and write and monitor the policies that really dictate how the district is run. They engage with the community, and in some cases, they are charter authorizers.
You know, what's so interesting about this is no one tells you that. Like when you're running for school board, nobody says, these are the six things that you're really supposed to do. You really feel like it's a little bit about, well, I'm a mom and I have kids, or I'm a dad and I'm mad about the sports, or, you know, something like that. But you just laid out, no, this is a governance role. This does, there are some very clear markers, and you also admitted something really big and important, which is you, on your first day of coming to that seat, you weren't aware of everything you needed to be aware of, because it's a learning experience. Your organization, though, is cutting that learning curve down for people. And what do you think it is that you all are providing to to new board members that helps them get ahead of the game? Know what they need to know when they when they sit in that seat?
Yeah, I mean, look, no one goes to get a degree in school board. Like, maybe that would be good someday, but that doesn't happen. And the existing support for school board members is really disconnected. You might go to a conference and there's a couple hundred issues that you could choose, and there's not a real scope or sequence. There's not a lot of clarity about how to turn your campaign promises into real change for kids, right? And we all ran for a reason, or most of us. And so what our organization does is just that. We try to help take this really kind of nebulous, ambiguous job and turn it into a specific set of processes and procedures that turn your campaign promises into policy change for kids.
Your organization is releasing a toolkit meant to help people understand, school board members understand their role and how to be good at their job. So tell us a little bit about that toolkit. What do you think it prepares them to do?
Yeah, so the toolkit is called empowered governance, and it's both a new school board governance framework and a policy toolkit. It's actually a really big deal. Most school boards use one of a few school board governance frameworks that have been in existence for a long time, and we think aren't really meeting the needs of today's school boards and the reality of today's politics and who's running for school boards and the change that they want to see. And so we have a new framework that is called empowered governance for a reason, because we think that school board members are elected by their communities with a mandate for change in many cases, and that the existing school board governance frameworks don't really empower them to lead that change. And so it's a framework, but then also really exciting is that it includes over 30 model policies that school board members can just take and implement in their own district. And so it's a little bit more of a plug and play, full roadmap, where you don't have to, you know, read the framework and think it sounds great, but then figure out how to actually apply it on your own.
When you think about those, the older models that we were taught, so, you know, it's been a while since I've been a school board member, over a decade since I've been a school board member, and I did learn the old way, like the old model of school board governance. Update me, like, what's different now if I was one of the ones who was trained in, you know, the 80s version of what it means to be a good school board member? Like, what's different now with the incoming folks?
Yeah, I mean, to be clear, the 80s version, which is most commonly known as the policy governance model, which we find odd, because it actually does not put policy at the center of the model. But it was better than what came before it, which was basically micromanaging. And no one likes that. And so policy governance, you know, created a framework and really helped school boards stay in their governance lane. But after working with hundreds of board members who were using that model or other spinoffs, we really found that they were being disempowered to a degree that was unacceptable. That, again, as the folks elected by their communities to provide accountability for the system, you know, folks that were using this model weren't evaluating their superintendent every year. If they were evaluating them, they weren't doing so using student, you know, outcomes. We had many board members tell us that they had never passed a policy that hadn't been written or initiated by the district administration, that their board wasn't actually playing their role as policymakers. And we are students of history. We think it's really important to understand where school boards came from. And, you know, especially following Brown versus Board of Ed, school boards passed a lot of policies. They were in the policymaking driver's seat, and they passed policies that continued de facto segregation and really set our schools up for the inequalities that we see today. And so for school boards to now leave that policymaking role to the superintendent and their cabinet really is a disservice to the role and to kids. And so one of the big differences is that we're just really empowering them to step into that policymaking role to dismantle the status quo systems that aren't working for so many kids.
You know, the 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 population, the student population in American public schools is changing quite a bit. And it's, if it isn't already, it's tilting what used to be called minorities now becoming the majority of the school system. And it's much, many more kids in poverty than the system has usually had, which is creating a new need for, I think, leadership and governance. It's creating just, you know, kind of new opportunities and challenges to think differently about how the system works for people. But, you know, I wrote about this a couple of years ago, the average school board member is whiter, more male, more conservative, and wealthier than the students, and older. Yes, all of the things. And what you're going to have is a crop of incoming board members that actually are bucking that trend, because there's going to be more community based school board members coming in. What do you think the help is that is needed for equity minded school board members, especially they're going to be younger, more people of color, more moms and women, just, you know, the the look of what the school board looks like is going to be different? What's the equity preparation? What's the preparation for the equity school board member that's needed?
Yeah. So I'm going to use a lot of generalizations in this coming statement, so just take that for what it is. But, you know, when we're talking about the boards of the past, as you said, the older, whiter, wealthier, more male, they did tend to come into the role with more time. They were retired, often independently wealthy, perhaps a long corporate career, experience running organizations and big budgets. Some of that, you know, is really positive experience to bring to the board. Also, not representative of the communities that they served, which is super problematic. But today, if we're talking about folks that are younger, like myself, I'm a working parent, I have a full time job. You know, we have a lot of folks in our fellowship who haven't run organizations, haven't sat on other boards, maybe haven't managed a multimillion or billion dollar budget. And the perspective and priorities and values that they bring to the board are essential. But they need training and support to be able to go up against a CFO who has, you know, decades of training in finance and feel comfortable as a young working mom that's never managed a multi billion dollar budget, to feel comfortable asking questions, pushing back, playing a real role in that budget process, just as one example. Like, there's a lot of skills and knowledge that board members need in order to take their really important life experiences and know how to set up on a dais and write policy and manage budgets and just do work that may have been different than they've experienced in their day job or life before. So that's one big piece is just equipping folks with the knowledge and skills to be able to feel comfortable and confident dismantling and changing these systems that have existed for a long, long time. On the equity front, you know, a lot of times, the data that's going to come before you as a board member is going to be intentionally not disaggregated by subgroup data, or not giving you the information you need to know if there's a problem with equity. And so again, you need to have training and support to know what should you be looking at? What question should you be asking? This isn't the only data you can ask for, you know? And so just equipping folks to bring their equity values into the boardroom in a way that can actually result in change.
Feels like when you come in, you have no shortage of passion about the issues. And, you know, especially people like me, I was an activist before I came onto the board. I ran for school board and I just won. And then all of a sudden, it's like, oh, I'm not an activist exclusively anymore. I have to be responsible for what you just said, almost billion dollar budget. We had 35, I think, 33,000 kids. Data, data came up in, you know, kind of all the meetings. And there was a real ability to feel like imposter syndrome. And districts, you know, listen, let's think the best of districts, but sometimes they can push you around a little bit on the, we're the experts, but you know, you're elected to govern. You're like the governor in some ways. I know you're supposed to speak with one voice. You're not the governor. You're part of a governing body. We, I didn't have a toolkit. I didn't have policy languages and model policies. I had to search for what San Francisco was doing, what other states were doing, and other cities were doing. And I wish I would have had a school board partners at that point, because I needed connection to other people. How much of the work that you're doing, I know you're preparing people with with training, with toolkits, with model policies, but also how much is it making sure that school board members don't feel isolated and alone, and that they can tap in to other school board members that might be like living the same challenge that they're living? How much of that is the work?
It's a huge piece of the puzzle. In fact, we would say that capacity and self care are probably two of the biggest gaps that we're trying to fill. We thought initially it would be skills and knowledge. Now we would say capacity and self care, because, look, I'm I'm doing my job as a school board member. After I finished my day job, I've made dinner, I've put the kids to bed, I've done the dishes, I've maybe had to finish some work from my day job, and now I can sit down at 11 o'clock at night and start my really important work as a school board member. And so capacity is real. And so just the toolkit, the fact that we're like giving you so much of this to implement is really meaningful. But yeah, I'm lonely, I'm exhausted, I'm burnt out, and without the community that we built, without the ability to, you know, call someone who gets it, who understands what it's like to walk into the grocery store and and get yelled at, that community is essential. And one of the exciting stats, you know, besides saying that 80% of our school board members were reelected, is also just the fact that they chose to run for reelection, when our report last year showed that only 38% of school board members are even choosing to run for reelection, because the work is so hard. And so we really are doing a lot just around their sustainability, helping them get up every day to fight the good fight and and do that work at 11pm and wake up the next morning and go to the grocery store with a smile.
I hope we're selling the job to people. We're like, oh, my God, it's so tough. It's terrible. Listen, if you're listening to this and you haven't run for school board yet, it's a great job. It's amazing. You should do it.
Well, to that point, a whole nother piece of our work is really looking at the job itself. And again, it was designed for a different time and a different place. And if you were to say, you know, I'm designing a role for people who are representative of parents in our system, you would not design a volunteer role that's done at night with no staff, no pay, no childcare, like, it's just not practical. And so I think the sector really needs to think about the entire role and through a different light and say, you know, if we believe in democracy and believe in, you know, local voices having a say over what happens in our schools, then we need to make the job more sustainable. And despite all of that, it is still, you know, some of the most interesting and important work I've ever done, and I would encourage anyone to run for school board.
It's, so would I. I think everybody has to do it once. Everybody with skills has to do it once. You know, so, so much of your focus is on making sure that school board members have what they need to be better at the job and getting very specific, not just about that kind of like the philosophies part of it, but, you know, this is what the job is, this is what it details, like the basic background. And then I think the the model policies are just worth their weight in gold to me as a former school board member, I could tell you. But is there an application for the public to know more, like, using your toolkit, if your toolkit was to bleed out into beyond just school board members, is there a way for the people who are super active in the school board meetings who come, for instance, to to learn from what this toolkit has, what your work is doing, so that they are better judges of how good their board is doing?
Yes, absolutely. Great question. I think there's a couple of ways that community members can use it. One is, you know, the toolkit is clear about the rules of a school board member. And if you are sitting in a school board meeting and you're looking at that list and you're listening to what your school board members are actually talking about, and they're talking about something that's not on that list, then you should email them or stand up at Public Comment and say, you know, according to what I've read, you're supposed to be either, you know, talking about student data, talking about the budget, talking about the superintendent, or talking about policy, and you're up here talking about, you know, who knows what, speed bumps. Let's bring it back. Let's focus on the kids. So that's one thing. You can also check with your school board to see how many of our exemplar policies they have implemented. You can, you know, school districts are required to have all of their board policies are public. So you can pull up our exemplar policy on student discipline, and you can pull up your district's policy on student discipline and, you know, compare them and go speak at a board meeting, send an email. So it really just provides a guidepost for the types of conversations that your school board members should be having, the types of policies that they should be passing for an equity centered, student centered school district. And if what you're seeing isn't jiving with our framework and toolkit, then we would say you should probably put some pressure on the board to be better, do it differently.
You know, so much of what you and I have talked about before is that I don't think that people do enough to elevate the the governance part of doing the job as the thing. Like, like, we deserve, as communities, we deserve people who see the role as a governance role for everybody, not just for some, not just for some political perspective, but the role should be like good stewards of the public trust for the hundreds of millions of dollars that are going to, you know, go through over time through your hands for the the care of kids. I wonder how we can make people care more about, I mean, it's not as sexy. You see headlines, you see news stories, a school board meeting is going crazy, people going bananas, people, you know, coming into the school boards and accusing everybody of everything and all kinds of conspiracy theories. You even see some things in, you know, I don't think it's fair to ask you to judge other boards, you know, but I do think it's fair to ask you because this is part of your expertise. I mean, when you see these other districts on the news and they're doing things like firing the superintendent on their first night there, and then replacing that superintendent with like a friend or something, and then they're, you know, passing, they are passing policies, but the policies that they are passing are super politically motivated and definitely not with equity in mind. I mean, what's the solve there? Like, how do you see, I know the work that you're doing is to make better prepared board members, but I know your hair probably stands on its head when you see those other news stories pop up. And what's the solution?
Yeah, I mean, a couple of thoughts. So, you know, one is that national partisan politics has no role on school boards, and communities should just demand better. You know, we have real issues. We have learning loss from the pandemic that needs to be addressed. We have achievement gaps. We have just, students need to feel safe and belonging and prepared for career in college. And so if your school board is talking about, you know, book bans or bathrooms, those might be, you know, those are important issues, but we got to keep our eye on the ball and stay in our governance lane and frankly, not use students and kids as a political tennis ball to hit, you know, back and forth. It's a disservice to everyone. But it's also partially why we designed this toolkit, because we think that in many cases, school board members who ran for a reason, hopefully the right reason, those are the ones we're talking to. And then they get on a board and they feel disempowered. That's when they start turning to the media and social media and speaking as one and causing conflict. Like, we really deeply believe that if school board members actually feel that they're clear about their role and they're empowered to play a governance role, that they then can focus in and feel really good about how they're spending their time. But when you feel disempowered, then you're like, well, now I need to, you know, go spout off on on social media because I'm not being respected and my role is not being respected. So, you know, it's a two part play. One is, we need to elect people who actually care about student experiences and outcomes, and we need to hold them accountable for that. But then even when they're in the seat, we need to make sure that they're empowered and trained and supported to actually do that well, or else I think you become ineffective because you don't know how to do the job effectively.
Do you see a difference in the situations that board members could be in? Like, in some boards, you are all by yourself as the only person that cares about equity and good governance. And some other boards, you might all care about good governance, but just don't know how to get there. Like, you just, you know, it'd be nice to have a guide, but you don't know how to get there. Then in some other boards, you're probably a mix, you know, like, you know, you have three or four people that are business minded, or, you know, they have the background, they want to be good governing, good governors, and a toolkit might help them. If we think about those three different roles, let's start with the first one. You're a school board member who's all by yourself. You're the only one that cares about equity and and good governance on your board. How's this going to help you?
Yeah, there's still a lot you can do as a minority member on your board. First of all, you should join our community so that you can learn from other folks that are alone on their board, really. But there's lots of ways you can use your power. I'm not going to say them here, because I don't want to give them away. But we have lots of tips and tricks for how you can still hold a lot of power as a minority board member. We also think at that point, you should spend a lot of time recruiting and trying to elect different people to join you, because ultimately, you've got to be able to count to a majority, you know, to get most of the change you want to see. We also put a lot of time and effort into helping our fellows become the president of their board, because although you're, you know, the first amongst equals, you do have a lot of power over agenda setting and managing the superintendent. And as much as there is an equity and representation gap on boards overall, it's much greater, as you can imagine, in the president's role. And so there's a lot of work to be done there. It's unsure that the president in particular is representative of the community. So, you know, there's, there's still a lot you can do as a minority board member, but it is really hard.
It feels like the other two types of board members that I mentioned, the kind of answer kind of writes itself. Like, if you're in the mixed board, it's probably get with the colleagues that you think are willing, right? And they see governance as important, and then work over time to either convince the others or replace them with people that understand governance. And if you're a full board that understands, especially, this is really great when slates come in. If you can make this a plank in your slate as you come in, no, we're going to be good governors, we're going to be great stewards of the public trust, and we're going to be competent, and we're going to learn together. It feels like a toolkit that already has done a lot of the work for you really would be a help for that group, right?
Yeah.
Have all thought about it together. You know, so this all sounds great for the people that are studious and who are going to do the work, right, and get in there. I feel like a lot of, we do need, the other thing I love about your organization is, school board members need support, you know, and and we've talked a little bit about that today, like, they need to feel like they're not alone and that they have support. And the phone a friend thing is huge. Like, there are so many policies that came before me where I pretended like I knew what I was reading and, you know, in a room with everybody, but afterwards, I'd have to make a phone call and be kind of, man, I'm going to need you to take a look at this and help me understand. And it sounds like you guys are doing all of that work. What's the change in the world that you want to see with this work? But you're spending so much time. You have a day job, you're on a board, and you're also trying to help many other board members. What's the change in the world that you want to see specifically starting with next year, 2024?
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, schools as they stand today are not working for, you might even be able to say, most kids. And we live in, you know, the greatest country in the world, or at least one of them, I want to believe. And so that just isn't acceptable to me. And the people who have the power to change what our schools look like are school board members. We are the We are the policymakers and, you know, governors of our nation's public schools. And I think a lot of people are dissatisfied right now, but you can either take that dissatisfaction and be angry and cause trouble and, you know, you've got students looking at adults just saying, wow, is that really what we're supposed to look like? Or you can turn that dissatisfaction into action that will change what our public schools look like. And so, you know, it's a big goal and a big dream. But we want school boards to start out as competent because you can't do, you can't make big change if you're not competent. And then once you've tackled competence, there's some really big structural changes that need to be made to our schools. And I think historically, a lot of big change has happened to communities. You know, change has come down from the federal level or the state level or from outside the system by folks that aren't really in the community. And school board members are such a natural way for community engagement to really authentically happen because school board members are elected by the community. So when you're talking about change by and with the community, if you can put school board members that are competent and well-trained and know the policies that need to be changed and dismantled, then they can do that with the community that elected them. And I think we could finally see the changes that, that we've been waiting for, for a long time.
When I look at the toolkit, one of the things I would, I, I would think that good school board members always focus on outcomes and achievement. So is there a point of view, like a through line through all your model policies and your thinking here? That there's a embedded point of view around the goal is better student outcomes and better achievement?
Yeah, yeah. The only tweak I would make there is that we talk about student experiences, environments and outcomes. Because so much of what leads to outcomes is a student's experience in schools every day. But yeah, one of the things that I think is powerful about this toolkit is because the policies were all designed together, they all complement each other and are woven together. So that's another thing that tends to happen in districts over time as you're passing piecemeal policies is that they don't do a great job of referring back to each other, connecting. And so you might have a superintendent's evaluation that says that you're measuring one thing and a policy that says you're measuring something else. And so this toolkit is really designed to work in concert. But yeah, the through lines are equity, equity and accountability, you know, run through every policy.
So Carrie, you know, in one part of your, of your framework, there's something called, it's balanced leadership? What's it called exactly? And what is it?
Yeah, power balanced.
Power balanced, okay. Now what's that mean? I get these terms, but what's that mean?
Yeah, so if you were to look across the country and pick a bunch of random boards to study, you would almost always see that either the superintendent has too much power or the board has too much power. And both of those result in dysfunction. And so our framework is really designed to try to get that power balance to be as balanced as possible. And to really respect the role of the superintendent as the CEO of the, of the ship. And to help the board understand that they also can't be all accountability without a lot of support. Sometimes it feels like school board members don't want their superintendent to succeed. If you're looking at it from the outside, which just doesn't make much sense. Like if your superintendent isn't doing a good job, fire them. Otherwise, support them to succeed. And so, you know, that support and accountability balance and the balance between school boards and superintendents is really important to us. So we've also woven that throughout the framework.
So if I'm right, your, your framework had two or three other main factors also. So the power balance was one of them. I'm thinking there were two other ones.
Yeah, there's four differentiators that we talk about. It's equity-focused, power-balanced, accountability-driven and policy-focused or policy-centered.
So policy, accountability, equity, and then power balancing?
Correct.
All right. I feel like if that, if I would have had that, I would have been, I think I was a pretty good board member. But I think if I had all of those things, I would have been a phenomenal black belt school board member. Listen, Carrie, I appreciate the work that you're doing at EdPost. We really care about bringing the conversations to the public that matter. And many of the conversations that we're having about education are all fire but no light. They don't have the, the, they're not making the public smarter about what we could do to have great schools and to have great school districts. So thank you for the work that you are doing and your organization is doing. We want to keep up with you guys. And we want to be a big promoter of this work that you're doing because we think that actually better school boards mean better districts and better superintendents, better schools. And that's all that we really care about at EdPost. So thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate it. I'm sure you won't be surprised by this, but it's hard to get big news coverage about a new school board governance framework. So.
Well, we think that this should be the main news, right? Like this is the thing, we should, we should all be pretty smart about the, our democracy and how things work and what will make them better. So. Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
We'll see you next time.